I could call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call. Raza.
Here.
Lancy. Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Farron Bach. Necessary requirements for quorum. I did get an email from Alderman Lohman for she'll be late, but she'll be here tonight. All right, we will move on then to item two. Reminder to please speak into the mic. If you come up to address us, the mic is adjustable up there at the podium. And then item three would be approval of minutes from April 29th, 2025. Do we have any corrections? Any anybody saw on them? Not going to get a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. Motion by Sulfah, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Then on items for removed, added, or changed, we'd like to move item 10 up to 5A and do that right away. Try to time it out with some stuff that's going on at the high school tonight as well. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve change in the agenda to move item 10 to item 5A?
So moved.
Second. Okay, good guess. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. We'll move on to item five, which is matters from the public for anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Is anybody here for anything not on the agenda?
I don't know if it's on the agenda.
That is on the agenda tonight. Yeah, all right. Okay, seeing none. Then we'll move on to item 5A, which is a discussion on adopting the Batavia community flag as the official city flag. So Leah, did you want to talk about this or?
Sure. So this is very loud tonight. We were, a lot of us were part of the Chamber of Commerce initiative to create or to have a team of, a panel and people who submitted designs for a Batavia flag and realized this past year that the winner of the design was Rachel Agro, who is currently a senior at the high school, so getting ready to graduate. You know, she's in her last week even today. So, but I was just thinking and collaborating with some people, like, how cool would it be to recognize her and make the Batavia flag the official city flag for us? And so the city of Lockport recently did that. And so talked to Marty about it since he has, he's our local vexologist. And so, and just was really excited about this opportunity. So actually invited Marty to be here tonight. So I think he has a few brief things to say along with Margaret, so.
Evening, council. Thanks for inviting us. Thank you, Leah, for the introduction. We, I know you have seen the flag. I have brought it before you before when we proclaimed Rachel Agro is a winner of the Batavia community flag contest. Marty will go through the details. But really, the reason that this idea came about is, you know, we were all, made it through COVID together through the pandemic, realized what is special. We knew before we had a special community, but it really, really was highlighted during the pandemic. When we highlighted how unique and how strong our community was, how everybody was willing to step up. And we just knew that we should try to capture that special feeling of community. And so we, I reached out to our vexicologist, Marty Callahan, who headed up a committee and we had a community program to ask people to submit their designs. It was a wonderful program. We had so many people on our committee that brought so much love to it. And in the end, Rachel Agro came up with this winning design that we unveiled in 2023. Like Leah said, Rachel is graduating tonight. She's at senior, she would have been here, but she's at the high school senior recognition night, getting all her accolades. And we thought how great it would be if we adopted this as our community flag, representing how unique and wonderful Batavia is, and let Rachel know tonight that it was accepted. So, but I wanted to introduce Marty Callahan, the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Margaret. I think Margaret actually just wanted me to dub her a junior vexicologist with a certificate and a little badge that she carries around.
Yes.
So I know there are a lot of new faces since I left council a couple of years ago. And Margaret asked me to do this because I was on the Flag Day Monument Committee. And we were just in the process of finishing that up. And I like flags a thing or two. As Leah said, I did help with, because of our flag, I did help Lockport in creating their flag. And that was run by an eighth grader who shepherded the whole process. He runs a mean meeting. Mr. Mayor, I think, watch out. But coming out of that, it was really amazing. We adopted ours as a community flag first because one of the things when I joined NAVA, which is the North American Vexiological Association, say that three times, coming out of that, one of the things that really stuck with me when I joined it is seals, our city seal belongs to the government. That's an official representation of the government. And flags belong to the people. So I loved that part first, that we, as Margaret was running with this, set it up first as a community flag and make sure that the community embraced it and fell behind it. Because to just create a flag without any type of buy-in for the community that it represents, it doesn't do anything. It's just an ego project at that point. But we created the committee, and I know there are several of you that are new, some of you heard this, but the committee was created by a sampling of residents that either had design background, knew about the history of Batavia, were involved in Batavia. We had one of Batavia's historical society's former curators, Kathleen Terryton, who also was going to be here tonight but couldn't. She is absolutely fabulous in getting the art direction in the community over at the high school for all the kids and really inspire them with the banner program that we do every year. So if there was anybody that was going to be a good ambassador for our community and have really buy-in, it was going to be her because we see the work of her students every day driving around the community. And that became one of the really big sense of source of pride on this. We had over 110 submissions from all over the world even, because there are people who love flags so much, they just like designing flags. And with that, though, nearly, I think it was 60% of all of those submissions actually became from elementary or high school students. And that spoke to the engagement that our children really felt for our community. And it wasn't just drawings that didn't mean anything to them. They really captured the heart and soul. And we did some round robin-ing, voting for the, for the flags, and it came down to the final 10. And then it really coalesced with the top three to what you do see today. But even that top 10, we did with no background, no bio details on anybody. Five of the top 10 were students. So with that, Rachel, when she designed the flag, it's one of those things, how do you capture the sense of your city that's represented? Our flag behind us does that for the United States. City of Chicago is a great example of branding and what people really come to symbolize a municipality. And that became really important for us because we don't have a city flag. We have a city seal, but we don't want to be just like what everybody else does and put a seal on a bed sheet is what they call it. We wanted our own flag because we do have the Flag Day Monument here. And it should be a source of a lot of things, a source of pride, but also tourist destination for us. And we want to make sure that we stand above the rest of the communities before we take over North Batavia. I mean, Janine. Plus, we need a good flag to do that, too. So with hers, it did, if you want to hold that out vanna.
Of course.
So a lot of what we heard from people, this community is very split. I want windmills on the flag. I do not want windmills on the flag. So she thought of a creative way to do that, which would be stylize the windmill into a sunset or a sunrise, because the center of it is the river. That's the center and the main artery of our community. And when she explained it, I loved that it could be for the east side, a sunrise, or for the west side, a sunset. It didn't matter which side of the river you were on. And then the traditional school colors, which we're not taking school colors, but it does represent our community. So I think she, she did nail it. And she has received a lot of positive feedback over the two and a half years since we created this to make sure that people did understand it, they did feel it. And it was, it's been wildly accepted. So, anybody have any questions? I won't have any quizzes to give out. Leah wanted me to give, you know, which is the hoist, which is the fly?
Do you have to say how it's created to produce it?
Oh, now she's really trying to do her apprenticeship. Because there are five basic principles designed by NAVA. Number one, keep it simple. Number two, use meaningful symbolism, images, colors that do reflect the community. Use two to three basic colors, no lettering or seals, and be distinctive and related to your community so that anyone can draw your flag from memory. That's it.
I like the fact that, you know, to me, ties in pretty much to anything you want to bring up in town. And the fact that you can look at it as sunrise or sunset, but you always know that the river's there. And that's, you know, the base, basically. To me, that's the way I look at it. And yeah, I've had a lot of good feedback about the flag that I've seen out there and people that talk about it.
And some other good things about it, it's not just the flag itself, but it does start to symbolize the community, like the Chicago city flag, that you see that on everything. And even when a police officer or firefighter in Chicago pass, they are buried not with the American flag over them, they are buried with the city flag over it. But when you start to see that it's really good, or when people start getting tattoos of it, or start incorporating it into merchandise. And we've seen that with hot sauce sales. And I believe even some aldermen have incorporated it into their fantastic signs.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? I think now we'd be looking for a motion to accept this flag as the Batavia official city flag beyond the community flag designation.
I'm moved. Second.
So I have a motion by Lehman, second by Vogelsinger. Roll call, please. Raza.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Hi.
Farron Bach. Out of 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're off to a good one.
I'm sorry, real quick. I did think of one question real quick. I apologize for going out order. If I could bother you, where can I get one?
The Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce. Excellent. Thank you.
Alan, do we need to make that a resolution?
We will have it as a resolution on the next city council agenda so that it will be official as of the next council meeting.
Next week?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I should have mentioned that. You could go to the chamber's website, bataviachamber.org, and you could order a three by five, like you saw, the big house flag, or you could order a garden-sized flag with a stand that goes with it. Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Yes, the consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2025-66-R, approving early termination for the cable franchise agreement with MetroNet. Resolution 2025-71-R, approving a contract with Substation Enterprises Incorporated to purchase structural components for the main substation reconfiguration in the amount of $185,900, which includes a 10% contingency. Resolution 2025-72-R, approving task order six with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories to purchase relay panel for the main substation reconfiguration in the amount of $109,646, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 2025-67-R, authorizing the execution of a contract for the JDS Government Center roof replacement and fall protection with Malkor Roofing of St. Charles, Illinois. Resolution 2025-73-R, authorizing an execution of an IGA with IDOT for routine maintenance of certain state roads. Resolution 2025-74-R, IDOT resolution for municipal construction on state highways. Resolution 2025-69-R, hosted phone system. Resolution 2025-70-R, phone upgrade. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Second by Sulfah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, and we'll move on to item seven, which is a motion to approve a bid of, to purchase land west of 122 South Van Buren Street. Scott, welcome.
Hello, thank you. This is a excess land of property that we purchased on Webster Street. This parcel actually extends out to South Van Buren Street. We did advertise for bid to sell a small triangular piece of it that really is an excess piece of land. We did get one bid for the land at the time of the bidding deadline, and it was in the amount of $535, which was the amount that we had had as the minimum bid amount. So we are recommending approval of the resolution so that we can sell the parcel to the adjacent
Any questions, any comments?
It's another one of those little pieces of land that we find we don't need and better off to put it back on the tax rolls and let somebody else have it.
Every time we buy a piece of property, we seem to have something we want to get rid of then.
Even the ones we find we own, didn't know about. Then could I get a motion for that? Obed.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. All right, then we'll move to item number eight, which is a discussion motion on TIF support request for proposed multifamily development on the 400 block of South River Street.
Thank you. This is a request from a potential buyer of the old quarry site on the east side of Illinois 25, South River Street, that is for future development that they would be coming forward with a petition for. They are in the process of submitting zoning application information to the city. That application is not fully complete yet, but as part of their application through IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, they needed to get some approvals for the financing of this as well as the zoning end of it. So this part is the financing end of it. They are asking for $1.2 million in TIF funding to help pay for the acquisition of the land. The land, I believe, is on the market for $1 million. And that would also be for additional closing costs and other things that are related to the land transaction. They are represented here tonight. In case you have any specific questions about, you know, the request, we did provide a lot of information in the staff report, including some conceptual plans that are part of the request. And again, they are here tonight if you have any specific questions besides anything that I can answer for you.
Open up for questions. Anybody on council have questions?
Yeah, I sent a list of questions over previously regarding the makeup of the complex. We talked about kind of the types of units, the intended tenants for those units, the timeline for the construction, just a basic one, two, three. They are asking for $1.2 million, which is significant. So I think it behooves us to ask a lot of questions. Right? So I don't know if you want to field those or should we bring them up there?
Most of those questions I would have the developer answer, so.
I am concerned about.
When we get done discussing this, then we'll call for, for public comment. Yep, no problem.
Good evening. My name is Marcel Armstrong. I'm the executive director with the Housing Authority of Elgin. The official development entity is Fox River Affordable Housing Corporation, which is a nonprofit development entity of the Housing Authority of Elgin. I'm also represented by Matt Lipoff and Patrick Griffin. Matt Lipoff is with Baker Tilly and Patrick Griffin is with Griffin, Williams, and McMahon. So I'm here to answer any questions. And my development team is also here to support me in answering any questions.
You want to?
Yes, so the $1.2 million is to fund the actual land acquisition and then in the architectural drawings as well, is that part of it?
Yes.
How are you funding the actual construction? Where are those funds coming from?
Yeah, okay, so our capital stock will consist mostly with the, with the low-income housing tax credit from the state of Illinois. That'll be close to $13,000. And then we'll also have this. And I believe we'll, we'll go after some of the affordable housing fund with, with Kane County. That amount is undetermined. Right now, you know, with changing interest rates and things like that, and, and change in bond rates with the risk-free rate, a lot of it will be very dependent on what our syndication, what we can get with syndication. In other words, you measure that on dollars, pennies on a dollar. So right now, that's anywhere between 87 and 94%, depending on what source. And, you know, if that is mostly a community organization or not. But my, my point is that, you know, it's very volatile and very, it fluctuates a lot. What I can tell you is that we entered into a purchase and sale agreement, and that stipulated that we would have our financing in order by a certain date, I believe, November of this, this calendar year. And so this TIF money would help because we don't expect to close until after that deadline would hit for the financing. So the TIF money would help us secure the land, secure the acquisition of the land. So then we can then focus our attention on closing on the actual transaction and moving on to construction.
So you'll have, you believe you'll have funding secured by next November? Is that what Eric?
Yes.
Okay, November of 2026, November of 2020.
Oh, no, yeah, well, we think we'll have funding secured before then. As a matter of fact, we think that if all goes right and you approve this, then we would be at construction by that, by that juncture.
The last four multi-unit rentals that Batavia has approved and has actually helped fund have all been government subsidized. Okay, I'm really excited it had a component to it. We haven't had a market rate complex here in 40 years. That's been more than 10 years, 10 units. So the question really is, we do have another government subsidized complex, Batavia Apartments, which does have a market rate component to it. So last time I checked, it was 32 units for market rate, with the rest being government subsidized. So is that an option here as well, or is it?
Okay, Matt Lipoff for Baker Tilly. So what we're doing here is, under the 2017 tax law, there is a change that allows for what's called income averaging. So in, in the past, where you had a limit of 60% AMI, you couldn't go above it for, for a li tech deal, what they've allowed you to do is go up to 80% AMI. So we're going to have units that are in the workforce housing demographic at the 80% AMI level. And we have a market study that shows that this is desperately in need in Batavia. Right now, under 80% AMI units have a vacancy of 0.6%. So there is a huge, huge market for these units. And we are very confident that they are going to rent because, as you mentioned, there is really nothing in this income band for tenants, potential tenants, current residents of Batavia. So this is a newer style of income mixing. Yes, there is still subsidy, but we are expanding it to a much higher AMI than had previously been allowed.
And is the AMI is at Cook County, is that Batavia?
Kane County.
Kane County, okay, which is what currently. So what would be, and is that by household or by individual?
It's by individual, and there's a sliding scale based on the number of persons in the household. I believe a household with three people, which would be a two-bedroom, is somewhere around $52,000. But it, if that's for 60% AMI, it goes, it would be 33% higher for an 80% AMI.
And that's currently, that's only 16 units of the 72, right? So 16 of the units are going to be 80%?
Yes.
Okay, and the other, what, 16 minus 72, the other?
There's going to be 18 units at, at 30% AMI, and then the balance, the 38 units are going to be at 60% AMI. It averages to a 56.9% income average.
I may be reading something different here.
It's quite possible that you're, you're looking at something that was submitted to you before the application went in. We had a couple of last minute changes that went in before IDA. We can provide updated numbers for you.
What we submitted would include 18 units at 30% area median income, 38 units at 60% area median income, and 16 units at 80% area median income. IDA has certain underwriting guidelines that may preclude, you know, stipulate that we might have to change that. And if that's the case, then we will certainly update city council.
And then do, do local residents get a preference?
There's no ability to determine who gets a preference. It's first come, first served based on income qualification. We are committed to marketing within the community and, and doing outreach within the community to make sure that community residents are fully aware and able to apply when the application's first opened.
Walk me, walk me through that. So if I have, so only because we have, you have a list of people applying for housing, right, who make a certain varied income levels, then you have a certain level of slots open that are divided by AMI thresholds, right? So how does that?
So we, we do have the ability to provide local preferences, yeah, for, so, and, you know, we can certainly use guidance from city council in those preferences. My understanding is that we can provide preferences.
That, that seems like that'd be a stipulation of funding, though, if I think about it.
From who?
A stipulation of your construction funds. If you're going to go through the state, I'm sure they have their requirements as well as far as.
They have tenant selection plans that would be required to be submitted and approved and all of our financial partners.
We wouldn't necessarily have an answer to that until January, November, which is fine. I mean, I mean, okay.
That's, that's all in progress. And, and, you know, when the award comes down, then that work starts in earnest because it costs money. And, you know, we don't want to spend money that, on a project that wouldn't.
I know that's something that's come up in the past with other projects that we've looked at, that how they would do that. And part of it is, how do they fold in whatever the state requires, you know, of the program that they're trying to initiate? And then how they qualify along the way in it. And then I think we do have a say in that when we write the agreement. We would have some input on that.
We would absolutely have a say.
Who else, Your Honor?
Yeah, I asked to give a little talk about this. This has been around a long time. We've had a number of people in the 44 years that I've been the mayor of Batavia, we've had a number of people come in and I'll call it kick the tire on this particular piece of ground. And what you have to, one thing you have to understand here is, is that And what you have to, one thing you have to understand here is, is that Batavia had this kind of dramatic storage of limestone south of the river, south of the bridges on both the east and the west sides. And so where the quarry swimming pool, which is over here on the west side came from, that used to be a huge deposit there. And then on the west side, the east side, there were 11 separate, supposedly different quarries, starting at the property line of this property and going south on both sides of the street, which were also mined as limestone quarries. And this ends up being kind of the last one killed, still kind of standing in the ground. And so most recently, this idea of some kind of a TIF support for this has come up. And I've had, not these gentlemen, but some other folks come in the office and ask, well, we've had some people look at this and they say that they're not sure once we start putting some kind of a heavy building on this area, that that limestone down beneath it's either going to break or shift or do something with it. So we've got to have some stabilization factors put in there. And we're wondering if we could get an eligibility for a TIF district expense, for that expense should it happen. And I said, well, I don't know what to tell you on that. That would have to be a decision made by the city council at the time it occurs. So I just wanted to share that with all of you, that this would be something that may come up. I don't know, these, I, when these two, three gentlemen showed up, I didn't get to talk to them initially, but one of the people I have a very good relationship with is David Captain, who's the mayor of Elgin. So I took the three names of these gentlemen and I called Mayor Captain and I said, can you tell me about these three gentlemen? And I will tell you that I have not probably heard as nice of recommendations and highly spoke of backgrounds as these three guys have with the mayor of Elgin. He really spoke very highly of their honesty, their integrity and everything else. So I'm not saying anything negative about him because the mayor of Elgin, who's a longtime friend of mine and he and I have done a lot of stuff together, he speaks very highly of them. So that's good enough for me. What I am concerned about though is, is that I've had several now in here telling me, well, we looked at that site, but that limestone that's laying there in the ground, it's not anything that we think it's going to be easy to build upon. And so we don't know if we're going to have to try to go into the ground and excavate it all out of there or do something else with it. But I've had it described to me by others, not these gentlemen, that this is going to be a very challenging site to build a building on. And so I just want to share that publicly with everybody because that's, that's come up now repeatedly as to other people have looked at this site and said, gee, this looks like it could be a good opportunity, but the ground kind of shakes it. And when you consider the fact that the limestone industry in Batavia really took off in October of 1871, when we burned down the city of Chicago. And there were three large limestone deposits. Now, I know all this because the Chicago Historical Society has been out here and looked at this because of this. There were three places in suburban Chicago, we had these tremendous limestone deposits. One was Batavia, another one was the south end of Naperville, at the south end of their current business district, which they now made into a swimming pool. And the biggest one, so I'm told, was in La Mont, along the Illinois River, where they could load the stone onto little boats and take it in. In the case of Batavia, we had railroad tracks that were put in in the 1850s on both sides of the river. So you were, it was easy to load the limestone on and ship it to Chicago. But the biggest utilization of Batavia limestone was rebuilding the city of Chicago. But now if you think about the time, do the arithmetic on that, 1871, we're almost 200 years beyond that. So I mean, it's, it's a long time ago that we did this. So I just share that with you guys and with the council that this is, there's some open-ended questions on how easy this is going to be or not going to be and that you may run into some expenses you aren't anticipating. So you need to put all that in your consideration as you go forward here. That's what I had to say.
We've done a phase one environmental, to my knowledge, that did not include any borings as of yet. But going forward, before we put any foundations in, then we would, you know, kind of to that. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
And just a second, that, so that's based on experience as well. We just had recently had another residential development project downtown, in downtown Batavia, that was delayed for six months because they found lead on site. So it's an old industrial town. It's on the river, there's a lot of variety in geology and everything. It's a real risk for some of these construction projects.
We'll take under advisement and work with our civil engineer and our structural engineer to make sure that we can mitigate.
Yeah, first off, thank you guys for putting this together. I, you know, looking around town, looking around the region, it seems like this type of housing is sort of desperately needed. I think the stats show it. I think my experience in working in the area shows this, so. And looking at the South River Street corridor, that region you're looking at there, I know that we're kind of in the middle of reimagining what that can look like. We're spending a lot of time, effort and energy just trying to figure out how we, what direction we hope that that section of town turns into. From my perspective, as just one council member, this seems like a great opportunity, a great development for that site, right by the park, right by the bike trails, close enough to downtown and all that. Just a few thoughts that I have on it though, you know, the TIF funding, you know, I know 1.2 million might only be a certain percentage, but for us, that's a lot, right? And so we're really, we want to make sure we do our due diligence and we're responsible. To that end, I know that we have a big push to make our town walkable and bikable. We really want to make sure that we're orienting things towards multimodal transportation. We have a multimodal transportation committee. We're pretty proud, I think, of a lot of the work we've done on that. Not the micromanager project. It does worry me when I see sort of a big parking lot, kind of right in the front, you know, as opposed to maybe in the back, especially with a bike trail, like the premier, you know, bike trail, kind of right up front there. I would love to, excuse me, to kind of get some insights and some thoughts on how maybe we can make this a little more pedestrian and bike accessible, especially considering south of there, we may be seeing some changes from that light industrial to something more mixed-use, commercial, who knows what, but probably not light industrial for much longer.
Appreciate your comments and we definitely take those to heart. I think that with respects to some of the layout and other things, we still have to go through the zoning and this, this process of deciding whether or not we're awarded the TIF is really independent of the zoning process. And we've received comments and I've been corresponding with Drew. And so, you know, myself and Patrick, we still have to make an appointment with Drew to really comb through those comments. But one thing preliminarily that my development team has decided is that we would put the parking in the back and make it a front-facing building and put the parking in the back. With respects to some of your concerns about multimodal, you know, we do, we are planning on putting in a dog park and also putting in a walking track around the retention pool. So I think that would connect with any walking trail. And, you know, again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, the zoning process is not completely done. So, so the way we might have presented it is not the final vision. For example, I think that, you know, we're resolved to making it more cohesive with some of the other city buildings and maybe putting a limestone veneer instead of a brown brick veneer and things like that. So there will be some changes.
I just want a quick follow-up too. This is kind of going back to the funding question. I noticed in your list, we're talking a lot of Kane County, we're talking a lot of state of Illinois. Are we looking at all at any federal funding and are we worried about any sort of funds disappearing? We might say, no? Okay.
This is independent of federal funding. Products, the private first mortgage is, you know, based on the 10-year treasury. So instability in the bond markets is a concern. Bond markets and there's really not much we can do, you know, rising interest rate. You know, value engineer the project, deliver it efficiently and try and minimize any sort of time expenses when it comes to debt. So from a federal funds perspective, I'm not overly concerned on this particular project.
And I'll add that, you know, a lot of the funding is indirect product of federal funding. As a matter of fact, the low income housing tax credit is divvied out through federal sources and it's a formula based on the population of each state. Even though it's state-controlled, the funding is actually federal sourced. And then obviously, if we put in project-based vouchers or any product of, you know, the housing choice voucher program, that is also federally funded. So the upfront money is, you know, not directly federal sourced in terms of our capital stack, but there is a lot of indirect federal sources.
Yeah, I was gonna second what Kevin had said about the pedestrian orientation. And I know it's independent of the funding, but for me, that is something that's really important, that would be my, my yes vote is pretty easy to get, but it is contingent upon it looking and feeling very safe and comfortable for pedestrians and cyclists for sure. And thank you for being here and working on this.
Robin?
Thank you for being here and bringing this proposal. Just asking, have you guys done similar developments in the area at all? And could you tell us at all about those?
Yeah, well, you know, the Housing Authority of Elgin is involved with several developments, mainly through our nonprofit development entity, Fox River Affordable Housing, which will be the lead developer on this. And that consists mostly of going into partnership endeavors with developers. So rather than getting a third-party developer, we'll develop that in tandem. This is the first venture that we're, we're the lead developer without a third-party developer. And I think that's important going forward for, for the Housing Authority and for Fox River Affordable Housing. And you also, I think the advantage of the city of Batavia or any other local municipality is that, you know, you got a direct line of communication with a responsible entity as opposed to, you know, a third party. And the other thing is that, you know, we look to manage it directly. Now, you know, as it happens, we don't have the final say in that, you know. We will partner with a equity investor who would help us syndicate that low income housing tax credit. But we're going to fight tooth and nail to make sure that we directly manage. And again, I think that that's important because, you know, I'm a phone call away from Scott and Drew and Laura and the rest of the staff. So I think that that's important.
And then I represent, I'm here with Baker Tilly. So we are a nationwide consulting firm. We have done hundreds of projects. We're in 30 some odd states now and if, if I haven't seen something, somebody on my team has, and that is the support that we're providing, Martell and Fox River Affordable Housing.
Jen?
So I was looking at your website and a lot of the properties that are listed on there, I'm guessing there's more that you kind of manage than, than just what's on there. So because what is on there is just showing age restriction. So you've done more than just age restriction type of housing, is that correct?
Yeah, well, first of all, you know, I have to show a lot of grace because our website needs updating and we're in the process of updating it. You know, to my chagrin, it's, it's been too long of a process. So again, I don't know if it accurately reflects everything we're involved in and to the extent that we're involved. Right now, we manage, we self-manage 166 units of affordable housing. And that's going to consist mostly of Central Park Towers. About a little, a little over, a little less than a decade ago, we've converted our real estate portfolio to go from a public housing model to more of a model that's involved with low income housing tax credit. And it's more of a public-private partnership. And in that process, we lose some control upfront in return for the investment of those investment partners. And so I'm in the process of bringing a lot of that management back in-house. It's not an easy process. And the other thing is that some of those investment partners, I'm also in the process of buying their partnership interest out. As a matter of fact, I just signed contracts today. So that would also give us more control. But that was necessary because the antiquation of a lot of the facilities and systems were deteriorating at a faster rate than we could pay to keep them upgraded. And this is a model that not only Housing Authority of Elgin has implored, but Housing Authorities nationwide, as a matter of fact, HUD is encouraging this for various reasons. But more to your question, you know, we certainly manage a minority of the properties that we're involved in and we're looking to bring that back in-house, you know. My personal belief is that, I believe that we can manage it better than some of the third parties that I've seen, whether that's in terms of maintenance and upkeep or whether that's in terms of fiscal responsibility and making sure that their cash flowing to our, to our thresholds. But again, you know, with this, our first thought is that the Housing Authority and, you know, my staff would self-manage this.
I appreciate your openness and, you know, about your website and, you know, you can only do so much. So thank you.
Anybody else over here? Dustin?
I was just going to ask about, since it's right next to the trail there, would there be a outdoor bike parking facility? I know for apartments of these style, it's, it can often be difficult to store something like that indoors.
I don't know if the plans right now really incorporate that, but we can certainly look at that, you know, if we just want to put a bike rack or, you know, our Central Park Towers site has a bike rack. So we can certainly look at that or any other things, you know. And again, I think that, you know, when we come down to the zoning of it and some of those aesthetics, you know, that are supplemental to the zoning, then, you know, a lot of those touch points will be, will be discussed.
Very good.
Anybody else, any other questions?
I have another one.
David?
And this might be a question for Drew or for Scott about just what the timeline looks like if we approve this tonight. What does, what does the rest of staff and council's involvement become?
Sure. It's, there are two separate processes that we're looking at. One is the TIF funding, which would then involve a redevelopment agreement that would have to be approved, negotiated and approved by the city council. We would also be at the same time moving ahead with the zoning authorization or zoning entitlements, I should say. So that will be, you know, a multi-month process to go through that. We have to rezone the property. There's probably a planned development. There may be deviations from the code that have to be incorporated, but most likely it'll be a planned development that'll be incorporated in there. Just a couple of things to talk about. When we did talk to them about the layout, we did talk about the parking that we would like to see it, you know, be put back. But, you know, for the purposes of just, you know, demonstrative, you know, site planning, they didn't want to make all those changes yet because again, we're just, you know, talking conceptual right now. We are asking them to extend the sidewalk across the whole frontage, obviously. And then we would be talking about possibly some type of a linkage, pedestrian linkage across Route 25 there because the park is across the street, which makes a lot of sense so to have that. So if you have people living here, they're going to want to go across the street. So that's an obvious, you know, linkage. And then as, as part of our zoning requirements, we do require bike parking. So there will be parking or bike racks will be required and we'll have to have some more conversations about, you know, what type of indoor storage they may or may not have for, for the development. But we do require bike parking under the zoning code.
As long as we're bringing this topic up, it is worth noting, until your children get older, you don't realize the lack of rental housing here. I mean, it is really unbelievable. I will say only a quarter of these units being proposed are 80% the AGI and it's for Kane County, it's not for Batavia, right? We can't guarantee anyone's going to have a preference on being in this building versus anyone else, which is stipulation of the type of building we're proposing. We have already approved and built for apartment complexes that have been government subsidized, right? So we've definitely checked that box multiple times over. There is, but what remains is there is a need for rental housing. So I hope this leads to a larger conversation on this because like I said, until your children get older, you don't realize how bad it actually is. And then you, and then you go to thirty shelter, look around, realize everyone's over 45. And you know why? Because everyone under 45 can't afford to live here because there's nowhere to live, right? So, and that includes private, you know, as well as So, and that includes private, you know, as well as public stuff.
I was gonna note, right, when I was about 25 years old, when I got my first apartment, it looked an awful lot like this in terms of the layout, like almost exactly same square footage and everything. So there's definitely, you know, a need for that, especially in our community. There's a lot of younger folks who wanna be working here, wanna be living here, and this would be great for that, I think.
And I will add before I shut up. One thing, I'm gonna vote no, and let me tell you why. I feel the emphasis should be on private complexes because I feel that's where the need really is, based on what I've seen in the community. It doesn't mean I wouldn't necessarily endorse this if it did go through, okay? So just to get that out there. One thing I will say is that we have not completed a rental complex, okay, in like 40 some years, okay? During that time, if you adjust for inflation, the price of a home has jumped 76%, okay? We have, you know, nearly doubled in size, okay? In that whole time, we have not added one market-rate apartment complex, all right? So just keep that in mind as we have these discussions, there is a real need.
I was gonna make a comment about how I have a daughter who rents a one-room apartment in Aurora, or in North Aurora, for more than I pay on a house payment for a four-bedroom house. And that's the reality of where it is right now. And you're right, we haven't built any apartment complexes. I think some of it happens to be, I think, some of the restrictions that are within our city on a multi-unit building compared to what they are in other communities. And I think that's why they are all ringed around us where, you know, the market rate, you know, apartments are at. So that's something that we definitely would like to work on. But I also will say, I think this is something that we need. Every time you look at Kane County or you look at the collar counties around here and look at the amount of housing that's in this, you know, metric here, it's just, it's not getting built anywhere around here. And when you can't have employees that work at your own city, your own park district, you know, your own library, you can't have them live in this town, that's a tough thing to take.
Leah?
Thank you. I'm just asking for clarification. Jim, were you saying you were gonna vote no on this?
Yeah.
Oh, can you explain it one more time, because I didn't understand why?
Because I feel the need, because only a quarter of the units, 16 of the 72 units, are gonna be 80% of the AGI. I think the demand is more, okay? There's also not a market-rate component to this. So what that means is I can't walk in off the street and say, hey, can I rent a room here, right? I have to go through approval process, I have to go through all that stuff, right? So it's not like when we say something is under this governance, right, that is open to everybody. It's not, right? So based on what I've seen, is just, there's just a need, and as lame as this sounds, a regular old apartment complex, where people can just kind of walk in, hey, I need a, you know, good beer for year, whatever, you know, get a roommate, sublet, all that whole thing, just that whole process. And we have not filled that need for so long that now we're, that's getting dire. And more importantly, it's gonna impact our vibrancy as a community if we don't solve this need.
The reality is, you can't force people to rent at below-market value. I mean, when somebody builds a property or owns a property, first of all, they have to pay the property taxes on it. If you're talking about a private place, if you're talking about a big apartment complex, they have taxes as well. Simple fact of the matter is, the rates are what they are for rent at the market, and it's just because we want rates to be lower, why would anybody wanna build something to lose money?
I'm saying that, I'm saying they won't even build the market-rate ones in Batavia. We haven't had an apartment complex of any size since I've been on city council, ever proposed to us within the city limits.
That's fine, but there could be reasons why, because it's just not viable from a financial standpoint. I mean, you can't force people to do something when it's gonna be financially not beneficial to the builders. I mean, I certainly wouldn't do that. So, and my point is, is that if we're just gonna start rejecting people because we want the rent to be low, I think that that's not the way to go.
The unit mix, is there minimum limits for each one of those levels to get funding approval, or do you have flexibility in that?
So there is, there's a maximum limit. So Ida does not allow you to do over 57% area median income. The minimum limit is, as Commissioner Soffa said, what we can afford to build. So we are looking at the amount of debt that we can drive. We're looking at the amount of cash flow that would be allowed to be capitalized via deferred developer fee. So Fox River Affordable Housing is leaving $1 million in the deal to be paid out over 15 years as cash flow allows. So it's a math problem. We are looking at the cost per unit, we're looking at the rent per unit, we're looking at the site costs and the rental limits. And so we're trying to square a really difficult circle here. And so the minimum is what we can afford to operate this at a 115 debt service coverage per Ida's underwriting standards, the maximum of 57%. Within there is what little wiggle room there is, and in this market environment with construction costs having gone up exponentially over the last five years, rates going from a zero-interest rate to now mortgages are 7% is what we're underwriting. The tax rates, as the tax rates have fallen, we were, you know, getting somewhere on the order of 95 to a dollar. You're now in the 80 cents per tax credit range. And every penny you lose in a tax credit is about $100,000. So as, you know, if they're gonna cut the corporate tax rate from 21% to 15%, we're gonna lose 6 cents per credit minimum. So that's $600,000 that would just be gone from the project. These are the considerations that we took into account while we were putting together the pro forma. My team ran multiple performas over a number of months to try and get something that would fit on the site, would be appropriate, would be backed up by a market study. You know, the rental rate, rental vacancies in Batavia are unlike anything I've ever seen. You are under 2% vacancy across all, across all income bands. And so while I totally understand the commissioner's point about wanting market rate, the economics would require the rents to be astronomical to make that work. And unfortunately, without $12 to $15 million of subsidy, deals like that aren't getting done in this market environment. It's a really, really tough market right now.
And I'll add that, you know, we're up to about $354,000 per door, which is, you know, pretty steep. You know, so to build one unit out of the 72 units that we're building, it's cost $354,000. You know, the land, 120, $1,250,000. You know, that's, you know, it's pretty expensive. But, you know, we're committed, obviously, to building in this neighborhood. We think that, in our humble opinion, you know, I don't, I don't like to come to people and tell them what's good for them. But, you know, in our opinion, we feel like this is a good opportunity for, yeah.
I want to say thank you so much for answering all of these questions, the amount of expertise you clearly have, and the information that you've brought, the questions that you've answered that we've all had. Fantastic. I am with the two over there that asked about the parking being in the back, thought I had, and then the accessibility for walking, biking. I think this is wonderful, and I'm very excited about this prospect. So thank you so much for coming to our town.
I wanted to talk about the apartment, or the multifamily aspect of things. Part of the problem with the community of Batavia is that we don't have a lot of land. And, you know, we're running out of land for any, to be honest with you. We're down to our last one or two industrial lots, and most of it, what we're gonna be seeing is a lot of redevelopment happen. So I'd see a lot of the multifamily being downtown with some of these sites that are gonna be, you know, either existing city sites or other ones that they're gonna be buying up a couple of different properties, developing those as a redevelopment site. And so we're gonna have to look at that and density as to, you know, what we're gonna have downtown and in that area, because that's, you know, the density is what's gonna drive down some of the price costs. So that's, that's something we're gonna think about.
You know, a follow-up question on that, and I apologize for not blising conversation. It is my first meeting, now learn and talk less. So you bring a really good point, and the point is simply this, I think about how my wife got in, my wife and I got in Batavia, right? We found a beautiful old American forest grove that was completely rundown, right? And it was an older neighborhood, and we rehabbed it, right? Dumped a ton of money into it, but we loved it. And more importantly, we cannot find the equivalent anywhere else, right? This was like, almost like Shangri-La, like you'd like, like no one knew about Batavia, you still find these beautiful older homes, and, you know, buy them and rehab them, right? Unfortunately, with the increase in home prices, that pipeline of new families is basically cut off, right? Those opportunities have been bought up, those houses have been rehabbed. If you're gonna find a rundown house down in Batavia, it's gonna be, quite frankly, a shack from the 1920s that was never probably meant to be standing still after 100 years, right? So, and really, all I'm doing, and please, thank you for bringing the presentation. Don't think me with my vote is a negative thing. I, you know, if it does go through, if it does happen, I will support, okay, just to be clear on that. However, we have lost a pipeline, and the question is, how do we replace that, right? So a lot of this neglect of having these apartment complexes for folks to come in in their 20s and enjoy the community and grow in the community, and then, you know, save for a home, is gone. So we need to replace them.
Yeah, Jim, I appreciate the need that you bring forward, that there's not market-rate apartments. You know, my daughter moved out from the city, they couldn't find something out here for less than, or even for the same price they were paying down in, well, where were they? Edgewater, Uptown. So it's a need, but since I've been on the council over eight years now, we've been talking about having more density downtown and developing our downtown, and we just can't seem to make it happen. We've had big projects, the One Washington Place, the Bank on 31. We wanted that, but it's not happening. And so, yes, you know, to sit back and say, well, we're not gonna do anything because we just wanna, we want market-rate housing here, and that's, it's not happening. So I see this as an opportunity to get the ball moving, to get something going. The, you know, there, yes, it is, it's mixed, that the portion that's 80%, you know, those are new teachers in the districts around here. You know, I negotiate their contracts. They, that brings those people to get into a town where they're working, into an area where they're working, until they can afford something and create that cycle again. Because that cycle, really, after 2008, I saw it, working for the school district here and doing the building trades program here in Batavia, that cycle was broken where we moved into town to start our kids at Batavia schools, and were able to buy a house for that at that time. And after 2008, people weren't selling their houses, so no one was moving there, there was no housing available. You know, the empty nesters would sell the nest egg, and a new family move in. That cycle got broken there for a while. And I would say our efforts to get more density downtown have so far, since I've been on the council, have not produced anything. So this opportunity, I'm in full support of exploring this further. This isn't a final vote. You know, we still got zoning, there's a whole bunch of hoops to jump through. It's like, I see this vote tonight as, hey, let's look at this further, let's, let's help the ball move along, so maybe this project can happen. The corridor that we're looking at, we've been talking about, hey, we got, that's not a good look coming into our town. And I think this is, this is the kind of thing we'd like to see there to start that gateway to the town improve. It will, it will bring more density, it'll bring more people downtown, and when you get more people downtown, you know, likely to get more people coming. And then we maybe then become more inviting to developers that will do market rate. But if we just sit back and say, eh, we wanna wait for market rate, it ain't happening. It's almost a decade I've been sitting here, and we've been wanting to do the same thing. So I appreciate what you're saying, but, but I don't, I don't think, just, it's wishful thinking because it's not happening.
And I think that regardless how we get them into town, they become part of the pipeline. So I see this as an opportunity to meet both of what you're saying here.
I apologize for my language.
No, we raised.
Kevin?
Yeah, first off, you stole my line, the new guy line. That was mine for so long, you know? Times have changed. I just wanna kind of reiterate a little bit of what's been said here. First off, I plan on voting yes, unless, sort of from the public, I hear something very compelling here. And a couple of reasons why. First, you're asking for TIF money, and I think this is a very appropriate use of TIF funds, right? It's sort of the express purpose of TIF is to get something like a empty rock field turned into apartment complexes, right? Seems to me like this is a little bit of a no-brainer as far as where the funds come from. Should we be involved in it? I think so. It feels like, you know, there's this obvious need. Just as Tony was sharing, my wife is a teacher. When we moved here, I was on a nonprofit salary, she was on a teacher's contract. We got in at that sweet, you know, 3% mortgage rate, right? They're gone, right? That's gone, housing prices have gone way up. The types of apartments and housing units that attract young families, new, newly-married folks, simply don't exist around here, and it's really too bad because my wife had been teaching at Batavia for, I think, I don't know, seven years by the time we were able to move to this town. For those reasons, I really do support this. I like the idea of it, though there are some good questions. Like, it does raise questions, really makes us on council have these hard talks. So I appreciate, Jim, you, you're bringing this hard stuff up and bringing it in. So, and overall, my general approach, more units are good, right? My first vote was Ashton Ridge, which is right next to my house, not subsidized housing by any stretch. And I'm excited to also now vote for something that'll bring some affordable housing, some accessible housing to the market. Do you have another comment?
No, I don't have. Jen?
So I'll just add, not only will it bring in families, but also the single parents that are looking for affordable housing that then allows them to purchase a home within our community once they have that opportunity to maybe not pay market rate and be able to save, to be able to raise their child in this community.
Well, I think now I will, we have a discussion, and the motion I'll make would be to...
Are we getting to public comment?
Oh, yeah. Public comment. Want to have a seat, gentlemen? Does anybody from the public wanna make any comments about this development? Come on up and use the microphone. All we need is your name for the record.
My name is Lawrence Shoal. I live at 303 South Amburden. We got a lot of grandiose ideas here, and I understand what you're talking about as far as, you know, single families and getting people in. But where they're talking about putting this, the mayor brought up a good aspect and concern as I am about the limestone. Where I live, about two blocks away, I've lived there 40 years. My house is actually settled, and because limestone is porous, and if they're talking about putting something there, your TIF may not cover what you think you're gonna cover because you might end up having to put caissons in order to, because you look where the, you dig where the quarry, how far they had to go down on the quarry over there. What if you have to do that over there? You see what I'm saying? And the other aspect is where they put that skate park there. But what's gonna happen if you got this building complex with a bunch of kids, they're gonna be running across Route 25 getting hit by cars? Because the cars come into town, it says 40 mile an hour limit, but they don't do that, okay? I can tell you for a fact. And the other aspect is, my wife has acute asthma, and the last thing that she would need, and she's on oxygen all the time, is that limestone dust from construction. Now, the back part of my property goes up to the railroad, you can actually see where it's sunken down, okay? If they dig on that side of where the quarry is, I'm wondering what'll happen, because, you know, the porousness of the rock, the water going through it, if that'll shift where the houses are on that side, you know, who knows? So you really gotta think about this, you know, whether or not that is a good piece of property in order to do this. There's other things too, I can't think right now, but I'm not a great order. But like, I'm glad that the mayor brought up, you know, the aspect of the limestone. And, well, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Dustin?
I was just gonna note that this isn't the final approval of the project, it's just that we're putting funding forward. So if it turns out, I guess the developer will also speak to this, but I guess if it does turn out that the project is non-viable due to structural concerns, this will, you know, this funding won't then be given in that case. So it shouldn't be, this funding won't be contingent on the property being viable from a structural standpoint. This is just to get the ball rolling, and likely, when any other additional funding would be an entirely separate discussion in the future, once those needs are known.
You bring up a good point. So we're just talking about, we're saying yes to getting a letter of intent to you that we intend to give you the money. We're not cutting you a check for 1.2 million after this, right? I just wanna make that clear. I just want to make that clear for people.
Yeah, just to, just to be very clear, the TIF money wouldn't be spent until we are much further down the line. This is just a letter of intent to begin discussing the redevelopment agreement, which is going to be the document that's actually going to govern how this is going to work between the city and the, and the project. Now, for the limestone discussion, there are a number of geotechnical things we can do without having to drill caissons and do all that. There's a system called GeoPiers. It's a structure, a soil improvement system. You drill little piers throughout, you know, spots on the site, and then lay the slab basically over these little piers. It stiffens the, the rock, and then you're not actually putting it on the slab on the limestone. It would be anchored on these GeoPiers. And these have been successful in the city of Chicago before, and as you know, in the city, they don't actually demo a building, they just knock it into the basement, kick some dirt over the top, and blow a bed. So, you know, when we're looking at buildings within the city where we have essentially rubble pits that we are now trying to develop, this has been a system that's worked well for apartments in the past, and it's been approved by the Chicago Department of Housing, which is notoriously stringent on its development reviews, requiring triplicate reviews, so the plan. As we mentioned before, we are more than happy to work with the city in whatever capacity the city is going to want, to make sure that this is viable, and, and most importantly, a safe and well-built community for the residents.
Anybody else from the public want to comment on this? Okay. If not, then I would make the motion that we recommend a council TIF support request for proposed multifamily development in the 400 block of South River Street.
Okay.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Roll call, please. Wolf?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Farron Bach?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Going to be 12 yes, 1 no, and 1 absent. Okay, then I'll go on to council for the positive recommendation. All right, thank you. And we'll move on to item nine, which is Resolution 2025-75R, authorizing a master service agreement and task order number one with sustainability construction for green audit and grant program administration.
So, I want to start off by saying we had to change the name. It was originally going to be Bear, but these are grants, not rebates. So, we went with Green. Grants for residential energy efficiency in neighborhoods is what it stands for. This was one of the things that city council chose to do with the single-use bag funding, to allocate originally $85,000, plus we had $10,000 for administrative programming that would allow residents to get an energy audit, which provides them a data-oriented guide, basically, of how to improve their homes, both from a comfort perspective, but also from energy efficiency and best practices. And then one of the things you also committed to doing was providing sizable grant amounts. That was one of the things about this proposal that you kind of made clear, was you wanted to see some larger grant amounts. And so, during our conversations, we kind of batched it into two groups, a low-income group and a regular income group. The income limits are within the document, that is 80% AMI, so conversation we just had a little bit as well. And the, the reason we're doing that is because, you know, obviously, some things to do to your home cost a good amount of money, and, you know, we want to be able to see that the money we're putting toward these programs actually have results that we can demonstrate and show. So, that's one of the things that we'll also get out of this is, through our funding, what have we been able to see in aggregate across the community in terms of energy savings, in terms of improvement made? Really, the guiding principle in terms of selection is going to be, where can we get the most improvements for the least cost, essentially? That's something that Craig can talk to a little bit, is in his review of applications, you know, there may be homes that are significantly older, that have things like tuck pointing or insulation, that can go a lot further than a home built 10 years ago. And so, there's considerations thereof. If we're giving out $1,000 to make an improvement, we want that $1,000 to go as far as possible across the community. So, the intent of this program is to open applications June 1, have the application period open for about a month. We'll spend a couple of weeks reviewing applications and ultimately reviewing them and making selections, and that program will continue for the better part of the year. Some of the timelines in there are so that if it does happen, we can open up successive rounds of funding. I don't anticipate that will be the case. I'm hoping it's a very well-upped process, and that people do choose to move forward with improvements. But I'm here to answer any questions, and I've also got Craig Schneider here from Sustainability Construction, who's going to be performing the work. We've been working together on building this program out for the better part of the last couple of weeks and months. So, we're both here to answer any questions anyone may have.
I just have more of a comment to start off with. I just want to make sure that once we decide how we're doing this, that we really promote this as best that we can, and I think that's incumbent on all of us here at the table to try to share that through all the, you know, contacts that we have, because I don't know that it's going to be the first place somebody looks that needs this assistance or that can benefit from this assistance is going to the city website, or looking for this on their own. So, I think it's something that really is incumbent on us to try to push into the community to make sure that this money that we've received gets spent for the benefits that can happen for the residents.
We've got a, I was going to say, we've got a communications plan. We'll have some info on our website. We've got social graphics being made with the help of our consultant we used for the education campaign. We're going to do a press release as well, so we've got a couple of things planned to try to really blast out.
And I think this is really one of those things that, you know, when we did this, we took a lot of heat with the bag fee, and still get some grief about it, and I really want to see some results from the money that's been taken in from that. So, I think this is really an important thing that, you know, we really haven't done a lot of stuff like this. I mean, we've had a few rebates and other little energy things, but nothing of this magnitude. And I think it's really important that, you know, especially if the fee stays similar to what it's been bringing in, we really need to make something concrete happen with this, you know, and that money needs to be spent to save people money and to upgrade houses. So, I think it's a really good thing for all of us to work at.
I just want to point out that there is pending legislation right now at the state of Illinois to ban single-use bags at any retailer who has 12 or more locations in the state of Illinois, and that it would preempt home role communities from implementing the bag fee, in which case it would make ours prohibited, and so we would have to repeal that. So, we're watching that legislation closely at this point.
Interesting.
I wanted to piggyback, sorry, I was supposed to raise my hand?
Go ahead.
On your point, Alan, with the marketing of this program, I really heard a lot of positive feedback, Laura, on the Row Diet Media Campaign that you had, so I just wanted to kind of suggest maybe something like that for this.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that was really positively, kind of welcome.
Yeah, I'd just second that. You know, I hear a June 1 launch date, and I'm like, oh, that's three weeks, right? That's really quick. So, absolutely echo everything. I think the outreach and, you know, sort of all hands on deck to get, to get that going.
And the application will be open for a full month, so we're not intending to like, close it with, so through the end of June. So, yes, it'll go live, but we're not going to close it and start reviewing applications until the end of it.
Yeah, and that leads in very nicely to my next question. Sort of walk me through the timeline from sort of application put in, how long till selections are made, how long till the energy audit is completed, how long until then they can do their upgrade and get their, get their check?
Sure. So, because he's got, he's probably got some things to say on that, too. Basically, the goal is to have the, the applications reviewed once they're submitted within about two weeks. So, we have kind of an initial list. One of the things we wanted to make sure is that, you know, people who are getting the grants from the city are in good standing with the city, so that'll be a quick check just to make sure. From there, Craig really takes over, and I'll let him explain his schedule.
Hi, thank you for having me. It should not be more than a week before any applicant that's been accepted is contacted to start the scheduling process. From there, individual schedules always line up. Typically, any meeting can be made within a week or two with any customer from my side. And so, I would imagine that still, if the application and approval process completes roughly mid-July, that we should be conducting energy audits still within July. And probably around August 1st, I would imagine the first audit will be returned to a customer.
Is there any, having owned two old houses in Batavia, the age of the property does, does matter when it comes to who needs an energy audit? Is that factored into eligibility here?
Factor it in, in that part of the application are questions about the home's origin, its age, what's already been done. You bring up an interesting question that isn't on the application, and that is, how many homes do you own in Batavia off the cuff? I don't think that it would be a problem for someone who is a multiple residence owner to receive that, but that's something to consider even.
No, I don't currently own two homes. I just repeatedly, repeatedly have older homes.
I understand.
No, no, it's, it's money. Okay, thank you.
Alice?
What's the turnaround time from the date of the audit to the time that they receive their assessment?
The earliest I'd expect is one business week. It could be as much as two weeks, depending on what is found in the home. Some durability-related issues can have a little bit longer lead time to justify the recommended remediations. Items that are strictly related to energy efficiency, that's a, that's a slam dunk. It's nice and easy. But when health and safety or life safety is involved, those reports typically take a little longer to comply, complete. Excuse me.
Questions?
Perfect. My office.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I look for motion to recommend to council Resolution 2025-75R.
Moved.
Second. Vogelsinger, and second by Malone. Roll call, please. Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Farron Bach?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
That's 13 out of 14. Then we'll move on to project status. Laura?
Yes, Peggy wanted me to mention that the bond issuance for the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and rehabilitation of a lift station and force main will be coming to city council next week, and that is $10,565,000 in general obligation bonds. Because those are for the benefit of utilities, we expect to service that debt based on utility fees, and so we expect that much the same as we do with other GeoBonds that we have, that in any given year, that we will abate that property tax that has been dedicated to payment of those bonds. But the final draft of the bond issuance contains information as the, the bonds get issued on Monday, and so the final draft of that, while there will be a draft of the bond issuance provided with the packet on Friday, as is the ordinary course, there may be some minor changes to that bond issuance documentation that will be explained on Monday by Peggy. So, in case anybody has any questions about that, I can answer those questions, or Peggy can answer those questions. And then in terms of our project status, I wanted to mention that the 2025 street program and sidewalk replacement program is out to bid, and the bid opening will be on May 21st. If you are interested in seeing what streets are being worked on this year, I always like to point people to the fact that on our homepage at the bottom, there are city maps, many city maps. You can, there's the ward map, so you can find out which alderman, which ward you're in and which alderman represents you. There is a TIF map, so you can see all of the different areas in our town where we have availability for the TIF incentives, as we talked about this evening for this project. But then there are also maps that tell you what areas we're working on the streets, what areas we're working on improving sidewalks. So, there's a lot of interesting information there, and you can find out if your street is on that, or if you want to know when your street is coming up for resurfacing, you can contact our engineering department, and they can let you know where that is upcoming in the schedule. Public Works is also going to participate in Touch a Truck for the Park District, which is going to be this Friday, May 16th. That's always a really fun event, and both our police and fire departments participate in that as well. And we are continuing the project to install the surveillance cameras throughout downtown. We hope to have all of that equipment installed and up and running in time for Windmill City Festival is really the targeted date for that, our first big, large downtown event of the year. And then I was asked just to provide a brief overview of the Open Meetings Act, just, you know, the basics of it. We have several new members who have joined and have had some questions about it, and so I found a pretty succinct, high-level overview, and then I would entertain any, any questions that you might have about it. The Open Meetings Act, along with the Freedom of Information Act, determines the type of information that citizens have access to and by what method. They put an emphasis on open communication and access to information, with a few exceptions that are made. The Open Meetings Act applies to all public bodies. Public bodies includes all legislative, executive, administrative, or advisory bodies, and it also includes committees and subcommittees of these public bodies. A meeting is subject to the Open Meetings Act and is any gathering of a majority of a quorum of members of a public body. The, the quorum for this body is eight members, and so a majority of a quorum would constitute five members. The act is not intended to apply to chance meetings or social gatherings, and as long as those don't include discussion of public business. But if deliberation of public matters should kind of spontaneously happen at those events, then that would become a public meeting, and also applies to telephone conversations, text messaging, those types of things.
And emails.
And emails, yes.
Very important to remember not to reply all.
Right. Very good point. The Open Meetings Act requires that notification be given for all meetings 48 hours in advance. Minutes have to be kept for all meetings and should include the date, time, and location where the meeting occurred, members present or absent, and a summary of the discussion. The minutes need to be available for public inspection within at least seven days after approval of the minutes. For certain topics, you can have closed meetings, and these include discussions of employment or appointment, legal matters, land acquisition, security or criminal matters, and a few, actually quite a long list of other miscellaneous exceptions. In order to go into closed session, you have to vote to go into closed session. No votes can be taken inside of a closed session, and a verbatim recording of closed sessions is required. Those aren't ordinarily available through FOIA. They are to be kept confidential unless a question arises as to whether the purpose of that closed meeting was allowed under the Open Meetings Act exceptions. That pretty much is kind of Open Meetings Act 101, if you will. Does anybody have any questions for me about that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, Laura. When I was first elected four years ago, I did a class on OMA and FOIA that the city of Geneva held. And some, I remember somebody asked in that one about like, social media interactions also, like, how does that work with like, multiple older people interacting about city business on a social media post? I'm glad that...
I'm glad that you asked that question. I currently have a request into the city attorney to provide a memo on guidance with regard to use of social media. So I'll share that with everybody once I get it.
Yeah, and I think part of that is if you share your view on social media, if there's more than four of us that shared a view within a thread, the same thread, then I think that would be subject as a, as a meeting because it would be all common of, five of us would constitute that.
Sort of a first come, first serve, huh? I got my comment in first, I get to engage.
Be the other four to it.
Yeah.
You can have it, Kevin.
Yeah, well, you, I mean, if you're on Facebook, you know, I'm, my wife accuses me of not being able to shut up, which I think you're all experiencing a little bit. Thank you for sharing this. I think this is a really great, great thing. And thank you for the question because, yeah, social media is a big question, right? We're all kind of engaged in it and as elected officials, too, we do kind of need to, like social media is how I engage with a lot of my constituents. So I do want to know kind of when, you know, when it's appropriate, when it's not. I think the Open Meetings Act very generally is a great, great concept. I love it. I think that it's important that we kind of do stuff in the open. On social media, I was accused of, you know, meeting with folks outside of meetings, which I, I mean, I'll say it in a public forum, I think that it's important that all of us talk and communicate and I hope that we all feel that we can have conversations about important city policy so long as we're kind of keeping the spirit and of course, the letter of the law, but also sort of the spirit of being open to the public. So I just kind of want to publicly say in a meeting that I intend to speak with a lot of you outside of this meeting, never outside the realms of the Open Meetings Act. And I encourage the public, if anybody's still listening, to like talk to me, right? And talk to your elected officials. Aside from some of the new folks who I haven't gotten to know yet, I don't think there's a single one of you who isn't approachable, right? If you run into them in Juul or whatever, I don't think there's any one of you that would turn away a constituent or not want to, not want to chat with them. So it's, it's kind of the, the beauty of local government that, you know, I can't shop for strawberries without somebody, you know, finding me. So thank you for sharing that.
I find more so on social media lately. It's, it's better to find a link to whatever problem they're complaining about or whatever the issue is and get them the, what the official word is on it, you know, from the city, rather than what 17 other people think.
Do we have any others? Sarah?
I have another. I am so excited to report that the sidewalk outside of the rehabilitation facility is in on Deer Path around that dangerous blind curve where there have been no sidewalks. So that is the first step. It was dry on Bike to School Day, which was last week Friday, which was wonderful. There was large drop-offs and so it wasn't really heavily used, but it's there and they were filling it in today. My question, my other, maybe for Rahat, there's a sidewalk, I don't know why that's echoing so much, there's a sidewalk that looks like it's going to lead to the other side of the street because the sidewalk on the east side of Deer Path does come to an abrupt halt right before the neighborhood. And then there's a sidewalk extending to the street to go across to the trail, but there's no like crosswalk marking or like entryway into the trail. Shall there be?
It's coming. It's in the street program that Laura talked about.
I looked on the city maps and couldn't find it, but I don't know that I was.
It's probably very tiny that you can't see it. But it's in the street program. We are going to put that crossing in.
Thank you so much.
And while we've got Rahat there, I've been driving through the neighborhood over on Republic Road in Illinois and that and watching that go in. It looks really good. I don't know how, I haven't seen any neighbors out there screaming about it or anything yet, but it looks like it's all going in quite well.
They are probably screaming at me, not it.
Okay. I'm just looking forward to the day when I see people walking down the sidewalk.
It's all good.
Parked out in the street waiting for their kids.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have been working out the issues with the residents, so I think it has come down quite a bit right now.
There are quite a few people that are, I will say, south and east of that, that are very happy to have a connection now to get to the school. So. If I could jump out of turn real quick just to ask about the Republic, I noticed, I've been driving by daily to take a look, I have been hearing a little bit about it. I did notice that most of the aprons are in. I noticed maybe three of the properties have asphalt aprons, whereas all the rest have concrete aprons. Is there rhyme or reason to that? Why do we have some sort of asphalt patching for some of the aprons, but others are sort of the nice concrete?
So if the resident has an asphalt driveway, it was previously asphalt driveway, then they got an asphalt apron. If they had concrete, we put concrete back in.
Thank you.
Just a quick note, I know we're going to have a vote on whether to fly the pride flexons, which, yeah, I imagine we'll all be, you know, we'll vote on. I imagine that's going to drive a revisit from someone regarding what's the procedure? If they want to nominate their flag to be on the, on the city flagpole? Do we have that documented somewhere where folks can get that?
Was the question, so last year, we had a discussion about what flags could be put on our flagpole and it was that this body has to vote on that.
No, no, totally get that. I mean, what I'm asking is that do we have a, if somebody were to ask us, do we have a page online we can refer them to that dictates, that shows the policy?
I think it was an ordinance, right? Max?
It's, I just looked it up. It was, I think it's chapter seven of the code. There's two ways a flag can get flown, either by proclamation of the mayor or by vote of city council via resolution. So essentially, a resident would have to just essentially find two of you to bring it to an agenda and that would be how something would get flown. But it's a, it was designed to be a expression of the government speech and not a public forum, so.
So it's an ordinance in the.
It's in city code, correct.
Got it.
If you search "flag," it should be the first thing that comes up. It's called "flag policy."
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else? And I will look for a motion for, oh, Lea.
Really quick, I just wanted.
You only got 21 minutes.
Oh, God, then. Appreciation for getting First Street back up for, you know, summer use and on Water Street where the bike path now comes up. Are we planning on doing any markings for?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, definitely. And Rahat, sorry to pick on you, but we are adding signage for that area of the bike path, right? Along the old Primarko building?
Sorry, that's my understanding. Andrea is leading that effort with wastewater treatment plan. So I don't know the details, but I know that that's the plan.
I did notice that there was a little stop sign for pedestrians or cyclists or whatever coming up that, but there's nothing out on Water Street for vehicles to know that there might be people popping up there, so.
Last one.
Speaking of Water Street, the bulb out that was installed last summer, is that?
Yes, I believe they are going to put back in. They take it out for the winter season and they're going to.
I noticed today it's back in. Just today.
Oh, okay. I had checked just the other day.
Okay, great. Okay. Any others? Motion for adjournment? Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.